Our gratitude to Governor Hochul, Senator James Sanders, and Assemblymember Salages for their leadership and unwavering support in establishing this commission. We're also like to extend our heartfelt thanks to Senator Andrew Stewart Cousins and Assemblymember Carl Hastings for their continuous advocacy and their commitment to this cause here. Welcome, everyone. Today, we'd like to take a moment to honor the legacy of Alice Green, a revered civil rights leader who recently passed away, and her tireless work and dedication to justice and equity have paved the way for many of us, and her spirit will continue to guide our efforts. So if we can just take 30 seconds of silence. Additionally, as we gather here today, we want to acknowledge that yesterday was Women's Equality Day, and we're celebrating the strides that women continue to make, and certainly here that we see the strength of our women here on this commission. So it's certainly fitting to remember the past struggles of women and their ongoing work to continue to strive for equity. So I wanted to acknowledge that. I want to thank all of my fellow commissioners for entrusting me with the role of Chair. It's certainly an honor to work alongside of you, and I'm grateful for your dedication and your expertise, and I'm looking forward to the important work that we will do together. I also want to acknowledge the tremendous support that we receive from the Office of General Services, particularly Bradley Allen. Thank you for your support, and from the Governor's Office, especially Jay, with their support, and of course, the Chamber. We've been able to make significant progress with their support, so thank you very much. We are pleased to announce that the commission has posted the position for interim operations manager. That's been posted along with the parliamentarian position. And we're hopeful that the community will continue to show a great interest in these roles, and additionally, the executive director position will be posted by the end of this week. If you want to learn more about the work of the commission, you can visit our website at newyork.gov/reparations. In our pursuit of justice and reparative measures, we hope that our colleges locally and universities and special interest groups will take an interest, and we invite them to hold meetings, public hearings at their facilities to host us. We'd like them to assist with testimony and research, and of course, you, audience, we would love to have your participation in this process. This is a community commission, and we certainly want to partner alongside the community. With that, I'd like to move forward with the agenda, and let's begin by acknowledging the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Linda Brown Robinson to my right, Dr. Ron Daniels.
Present.
Commissioner Tim Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Jennifer Jones Austin.
Present.
Commissioner Dr. Deborah Jenkins.
Commissioner Linda Tarrant Reed.
Here.
And Commissioner Lori Daniel Favors and Commissioner Dr. Derek Hamilton are both excused. With that, and I am Commissioner Dr. Chanel Hawkins. With that, we want to begin with our first item on the agenda, which is the oath of office, and we are excited because Senator Sanders will be delivering the oath of office for Dr. Daniels.
Stand here, sir. Uh, Dr. Daniels, will you stand, please, and raise your right hand? You will repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Dr. Ron Daniels.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Commission member of the New York State.
Commission member of the New York State.
Community Commission on Reparations Remedies.
Community Commissions on Reparations Remedies.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
You are now a commissioner. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Dr. Daniels. So next item on the agenda is the vote for vice chair, and so we want to proceed with that vote, but make room, there are two candidates that are looking to seek appointment in that role, Dr. Ron Daniels and Dr., sorry, Deborah Jenkins. I apologize. And so we want to make room for each of them to share something prior to the vote, and so we will start with. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. Are there any others that are interested in that role? With no other comments, then we'll make room for Dr. Jenkins to speak first, and then make room for Dr. Daniels.
Good afternoon, commission and, oh, sorry. Good afternoon, commission and audience, community. So happy to be here, so happy to be able to again state why I would like to be considered and voted in as the vice chair of this reparations commission. For one thing, I feel that I am uniquely qualified in that I am on the ground with the grassroots of it all. It is in our name, Community Reparations Commission, and if you are out of touch, and I am not suggesting that anyone on this commission before stated is out of touch with the grassroots, then I believe that we're going to have a very difficult time going forward. I come with no agenda other than those set out within the bill itself, and that is to ensure that we are able to examine and make the recommendations that are set forth within that bill. I have no organization behind me. I have nobody submitting monies to my organization or to me. I am a blank canvas as it relates to transparency, and I believe that is what we need on this commission so that we can address the issues that have been set forth within the bill. I honor, as I said at our first meeting, the work of Dr. Daniels, who was nominated in his absence, that he's done, as I do with the passing of Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee in her efforts on a national level, as I do with former Congressman in his passing as well, Conyers, who has kept the national attention on reparations. We have now come to what I believe is a critical inflection point within not only the nation, but also within the, in our state, and the people have responded. As a result of the first meeting, they responded, they flooded the email of the reparations commission because they didn't like process, and I think it is very important that we are able to keep central the community within this process. As Dr. Hawkins just stated, we need the support of local organizations, colleges, schools, and other organizations that will allow us to come in and make our cases and to present our experts. These are all things that I am very well accustomed to doing. In addition to that, I can provide for Dr. Hawkins as the chair of this commission the type of in-the-morning 3:00 a.m. support that she may need. I'm here today, having said to the chair that I started a new position on yesterday, and I could not be here, but faith had me to just simply ask my new employer, am I able to take off today? No lies, no jumping through hoops, just simply the facts, and I am one who is committed to the facts, and that is why I'm here today. That's how important this work is to me. We have a very small window to get it all taken care of before we have to give a report to the governor and the legislators. I believe that I'm that person who can assist her in doing the incredible amount of work that the governor, the legislators have entrusted to our nine-member body, and yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Commissioner Daniels.
Well, good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Let me just say it is a distinct honor to be able to serve on this commission, and I am honored to be a part of it because of its strategic importance in the global, the U.S. and global reparations movement. The work that will be done in New York is unique. The work that was done in California was important, but the work in New York will be of a different character. It will illuminate a different kind of demand for reparatory justice because of the actual enslavement process that took place here and the building of quote-unquote "the empire state" on the backs of enslaved labor, and much more than that. Let me just say I am in that regard, honored to be here because I also, in addition to being president of the Institute of the Black World 21st Century, I serve as the convener of the National African-American Reparations Commission, which works synergistically with the CARICOM Reparations Commission in the Caribbean and the African Union Transitional Justice Fund that is working on reparations as well. As was referenced, I am also have worked very closely with Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, and unfortunately, she passed away, our shero, in working to get H.R. 40, the bill to study and develop reparations proposals for African-Americans over the top. And indeed, what happens here in New York will contribute to that process because the whole nation and the world is actually looking at New York because of how it is strategically situated. So I've come to really serve and to share more than anything else, to be supportive. I've worked on reparations most of my adult life. Congressman John Conyers was my dear friend. I had the honor of indeed convening the H.R. 40 Brain Trust or Forum, or whatever it was called, for at least 20, 25 years. In addition to that, yeah, and working with Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee for a number of years as well. We have an enormous amount of resources that we can bring to the table and share in terms of not only the definition of reparations and the nature of reparations and the formulation of reparations, and let me just say that I totally agree that the education process is incredibly important. It's incredibly important because activists may know a lot about reparations, but there are literally millions of, not only African-Americans, but millions of people, period, who do not know about reparations, who do not know of the injuries and the harms that have occurred in this state. And so being able to reach our people so that they will be able to come forward and tell their story and document the harms and the injuries that have been done as we formulate remedies is going to be an incredibly, incredibly important part of this process. So again, you know, I'm willing to serve, that's why I'm here. I have vast experience, that's sort of beside the point. It is to put that experience at the service of this commission in executing one of the most important duties of the hour. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels. So with that, are there any other questions of the commission before? I wanted to make a statement, but any questions of the commissioners, to the two commissioners that are up for the position of vice chair?
Can you talk to us?
I'm sorry. One of the things that I wanted to share is with this role, it's such an important role of vice chair, and this role will be critical in moving the commission forward, and so whomever serves in this role will certainly have to dedicate the time to ensure that we can get the work done and lead the work for the commission. So it is important that we make the time for this role. Just wanted to share that, and I thought that was important to share. So with that, we will begin to call for a vote for the position of vice chair. So we have two candidates, Dr. Jenkins and Dr. Daniels. So we can either do it by motion, or we can just have a typical vote where we, all in favor of Dr. Jenkins, she started first, we can say aye, and then we probably should show our hands just so that we can make sure that we have, we can do a standing count where you stand either way, but Robert's Rules does have a standing count, so we can do that, or Dr., and then after that vote, we'll take a vote for Dr. Jenkins. I mean, Dr. Daniels. So ayes for Dr. Jenkins, please stand.
Stand.
Or raise your hand. Want to raise your hand? We have three votes for Dr. Jenkins. Votes for Dr. Daniels, please raise your hand. There are two votes. Dr. Daniel gets to vote.
Get to vote for yourself.
The chair would, well, I would abstain, but if, in this case, I would have to vote. So without me, without me having to vote, we can ask if there are any ones that wants to change the vote, but if not, then I would unfortunately have the deciding vote. So we can do that one more time in case anyone wants to change their vote so that the chair is not put in the position of having to do the deciding vote. We have a three and three vote. So we'll do this one more time. We can do a raise your hand for Dr.
So you can do a vote.
Yes.
And they can, and they can say.
This is, this is not.
No, 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 no. The audience doesn't get to weigh in at this point.
Okay, all right.
Not yet.
This is not open for public, or thank you, this is not for public comment, but we appreciate your being here, and so we'll do a roll call vote. Thank you, Commissioner, for helping me do that. So we'll do a roll call vote, Dr.
So just do a roll call vote.
Yep.
Say which one.
Yep. Linda Brown Robinson, Commissioner Linda Brown Robinson, your vote is for?
Oh, gosh. The general, oh. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Daniels.
Dr. Daniels, recording one for Dr. Daniels. Dr. Ron Daniels, your vote is for?
Dr. Ron Daniels.
Dr. Ron Daniels. Commissioner Hodges, your vote is for?
Uh, Dr. Jenkins.
Jennifer, Commissioner Jennifer Jones Austin, your vote is for?
Dr. Daniels.
Reverend, Dr. Jenkins, your vote is for?
Deborah Jenkins.
Commissioner Linda Tarrant Reed, your vote is for? Okay, and we are still, we are at, we have one, two, three.
Nothing changed.
Three and three, it's still the same. And so the chair will cast the vote for Dr. Jenkins, and so majority vote would have it as Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
So Dr. Jenkins, it's probably more appropriate for you to sit here. Can you read this meeting?
Yes, watch your walk. Are you sitting here?
So we will now proceed with the vote. Again, congratulations, Dr. Jenkins. We will now proceed with the vote for secretary and treasurer.
Oh, wow.
Are you okay?
That's a horrible story.
Yes, I know, but maybe it should be.
I'm okay.
So I will begin and open the floor with nominations for the position of secretary.
You okay?
I was going to nominate, I'm fine.
Oh, okay.
She opened for nomination.
Yep, yep.
Um, I would like to.
As a, do I have to qualify while nominating someone?
No.
Okay.
Make a nomination.
Okay. Linda Tarrant Reed.
So we have to the floor a nomination for Linda Tarrant Reed. Thank you. Linda Tarrant Reed, there's been one nomination. Dr. Jenkins. Dr., I'm sorry, Dr. Daniels, forgive me.
I would like to nominate Jennifer Jones Austin.
There's a second nomination for Jennifer Jones Austin.
So I guess it would be appropriate to see, so if there are no other nominations, be appropriate to see if the two individuals want to accept.
Absolutely. Are there any other nominations for the role of secretary? With no other nominations, we'll open the floor for those two that have been nominated to respond. So there was one nomination for Linda Tarrant Reed. Linda Tarrant Reed, are you interested in the role? We'll make room for you.
I am interested in the role. I feel that the position of secretary is a very important and integral position that is necessary to keep all of the information and the processes of this commission running. The secretary has many duties, not just the minutes and convening the meetings and overseeing the law and making sure that that is being followed, but to be able to really understand the bill and make sure that we are operating as a commission in accordance with the law. So I would be very happy to serve as the secretary. This is a position that I've had in the past for other organizations that I am part of, and I know it requires a lot of attention to detail, and that is something I'm very comfortable with doing, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tarrant Reed. Commissioner Jennifer Jones Austin, are you interested in the role of secretary?
I am honored to have been nominated, but I respectfully decline and endorse the, I respectfully decline and endorse the nomination, second the nomination of Linda Tarrant Reed.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones Austin. So with that, we have one person for the role of secretary, Commissioner Linda Brown Reed. Can someone make a motion? I'm sorry. Linda Tarrant Reed for the role of secretary. I'm still learning everyone's names, I apologize, everyone. This is only our second meeting, and so we want to, yes, thank you.
So Dr. Jenkins made the motion, and then Jennifer Jones Austin, she seconded the motion, so now.
Did you second it?
I seconded the motion.
Okay, so it's been, yeah, so it's been motioned and seconded, so all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, with that, congratulations, Linda Tarrant Reed, you are now the secretary. With that, we have, next we have the role of treasurer. We'd like to proceed with the vote for treasurer. I will begin with accepting nominations to the floor for the role of treasurer. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Jennifer Jones Austin for treasurer.
Commissioner Hodges has made a nomination for Commissioner Jennifer Jones.
And it's Hoag.
Hoag, sorry.
It's all right.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Hoag has made a nomination for Commissioner Jennifer Jones Austin in the role of treasurer. Are you interested in the role? We'll ask that first.
I am here to serve as best I can and do all that I can. If there is someone else who wants to consider the role, then we should hear that as well.
Are there any others, any other nominations for the role of treasurer for the floor? Yes.
Is there any consideration, Linda Brown Robinson, is there any consideration given to those that are still not here? So does everything have to be decided today?
I think we need to decide that today. Any opposed? Are there any other?
So if we're at an impasse and no one wants the position, how do we move forward?
Well, if no, I think that.
What I said is that I would be willing to serve, but if there are others who would like to serve, then I am open to that as well.
So are there any other nominations?
But if there are others who would like to serve in this role, then so be it.
So any other nominations or even self-nominations from the floor for the role as treasurer? We need to second.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll second.
Linda Brown Robinson for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown Robinson. There has been a second for Commissioner Jennifer Jones Austin in the role of treasurer, and so with that, we'll accept a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Honored to serve, thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Next on our agenda is a review of the reparations bill by Commissioner Tarrant Reed. The floor is yours, Commissioner.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
All right, pull it in a little bit closer.
I have to read. Basically, what I'd like to do is go over the bill in brief. I think it's really important, especially for the community, to understand what the commission is charged with. So the Senate, January 10th, 2023, Governor Hochul signed Bill S. 11638AA7691, establishing the commission on December 19th, 2023. The bill was introduced by Senator Sanders, Cleary, Comrie, Holman Siegel, Jackson, Parker, Rivera, Supalvida. It is an act to acknowledge the fundamental injustices, cruelty, brutality, and inhumanity of slavery in the city of New York and the state of New York to establish the New York State Community Commission on Reparations and Remedies to examine the institution of said slavery subsequently dejure and de facto racial and economic discrimination against people of African descent and the impact of these forces on living people of African descent, and to make determinations regarding compensation and providing for the repeal of such provisions upon expiration thereof legislative intent, contrary to what many believed slavery was not just a southern institution. Prior to the American Revolution, there were more enslaved Africans in New York City than in any other city except Charleston, South Carolina. During this period, enslaved Africans accounted for 20% of the population of New York and approximately 40%. York and approximately forty percent of colonial New York's households owned enslaved Africans. These enslaved Africans were an integral part of the population which settled and developed what we now know of as the state of New York. The consequences of these past practices are still with us today. In nineteen ninety-one, a massive African burial ground was discovered in the heart of New York's financial district during the construction of a skyscraper. The excavations that followed the termination of the construction project yielded the skeletal remains of four hundred and nineteen Africans, many of whom were women and children. The consequences of slavery in New York State is not an echo of the past, but can still be observed in daily life. Systemic racism has cemented a legacy of generational poverty, and we still see this today. Instances of voter suppression, housing discrimination, biased policing, food apartheid, and disproportionate rates of incarceration. The treatment of the formerly enslaved Africans and their descendants in the city of New York and the state of New York during the period between the end of the Civil War and the present day. We're going to examine the extent to which the federal government, as well as the state and local governments of New York, supported the institution of slavery, including the extent to which such governments prevented, opposed, or restricted efforts of freed enslaved Africans to repatriate to their homeland. We are going to examine how New York State engaged in the interstate transfer of enslaved Africans and carried out federal policy in the furtherance of slavery. We're going to examine the de, the de jure and de facto discrimination against freed enslaved Africans, their descendants, and people of African descent generally at both the state and federal levels of government during the period between the end of the Civil War and the present, including but not limited to economic, political, educational, and social discrimination. We're going to examine the lingering negative effects of the institution of slavery and discrimination on living people of African descent and on society in the state of New York. Further, we're going to examine the current condition of living people of African descent in the state of New York to the extent practicable, including but not limited to economic, political, educational, and social conditions. We're going to recommend the appropriate ways to educate the public of the Commission's findings. We're going to recommend appropriate remedies and reparations in consideration of the Commission's findings on these matters. And we are going to consider other recommendations in order to reverse such injuries. Such remedies may include compensation, including but not limited to the amount of compensation, and who should be eligible for such compensation. We're going to examine the feasibility for the creation of a bureau to assist in the distribution and administration of remedies and reparations recommended by the Commission pursuant to paragraph eight. We're going to report our findings to the New York State Legislature and the Governor. The Commission shall submit a report, a report of findings and recommendations to the Senate, the Speaker of the Assembly, the minority leaders of the Senate and the Assembly and the Governor, no later than one year after the date of first meeting of the Commission held pursuant to the subdivision of section four of this act. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tarrant Reed. Certainly does, um, need some applause for the work that we are about to embark on, so thank you. With, we will now move into the public hearing portion of our meeting to discuss the resolution to allow video conferencing by members during public hearings and meetings. So I want to just acknowledge that this, first we will begin with comments from the commissioners, but if there are any public comments, the comments need to be about the resolution only and not for anything else. We will open the floor at the end of the meeting for other comments, but this section, this public hearing is only about the resolution for video conferencing. And so we will now move into the discussion, and at this time, I officially open the floor to the Commissioner for comments of regarding the resolution, the resolution for video conferencing.
Chair, if I may suggest, I think it would be helpful for the record and for those who are in attendance to actually read the resolution first, so everybody has a full awareness of what the resolution is.
Absolutely. Does everyone have a copy of that? I have it in mind. Yeah, if you're, Commissioner Jones Austin, we would be happy for you to read the resolution.
New York.
And it's also, I'm sorry, it's also on the website for those that are in the audience or streaming, we have the resolution on the website for you to review.
New York State Community Commission on Reparations Remedies Procedures for Member Video Conferencing Pursuant to Public Officers' Law, Section one-oh-three-a. In compliance with Public Officers' Law, POL one-oh-three-a-two-a, the New York State Community Commission on Reparations Remedies, the Commission, following a public hearing authorized by resolution on, the date would be August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, the use of video conferencing as described in POL one-oh-three-a. The following procedures are hereby established to satisfy the requirement of POL one-oh-three-a-two-b that any public body which in its discretion wishes to permit its members to participate in meetings by video conferencing from private locations under extraordinary circumstances must establish written procedures governing member and public attendance. One, Commission members shall be physically present at any meeting of the Commission unless such member is unable to be physically present at one of the designated public meeting locations due to extraordinary circumstances. Two, for purposes of these procedures, the term extraordinary circumstances includes disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, or any other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes the member's physical attendance at such meeting. Three, if a member is unable to be physically present at one of the designated public meeting locations and wishes to participate by video conferencing from a private location due to extraordinary circumstances, the member must notify the Chair of the Commission no later than four business days prior to the scheduled meeting in order for proper notice to the public to be given. Four, if there is a quorum of members participating at a physical location open to the public, the Commission may properly convene a meeting. A member who is participating from a remote location that is not open to in-person physical attendance by the public shall not count toward a quorum of the Commission, but may participate and vote if there is a quorum of members at physical locations open to the public. Five, except in the case of executive sessions conducted pursuant to POL one-oh-five, the Commission shall ensure that its members can be heard, seen, and identified while the meeting is being conducted, including but not limited to any motions, proposals, resolutions, and any other matter formally discussed or voted upon. This shall include the use of first and last name placards physically placed in front of the members or for members participating by video conferencing from private locations due to extraordinary circumstances. Such members must ensure that their first and last name in full appears on their video conferencing screen. The minutes of the meetings involving video conferencing based on extraordinary circumstances pursuant to POL one-oh-three-a shall include which, if any, members participated by video conferencing from a private location due to such extraordinary circumstances. Seven, the public notice for the meeting shall inform the public, one, that extraordinary circumstances, that extraordinary circumstances, video conferencing will or may be used; two, where the public can view and or participate in such meeting; three, where required documents and records will be posted or available; and four, the physical locations for the meeting where the public can attend. Eight, the Commission shall provide that each portion of any meeting conducted using extraordinary circumstances video conferencing shall be recorded and such recordings posted or linked on the Commission's website. That is www.nygov backslash programs backslash New York State Community Commission Reparations Remedies within five business days following the meeting and shall remain so available for a minimum of five years thereafter. Such recordings shall be transcribed upon request. Nine, if members of the Commission are authorized to participate by video conferencing from a private location due to extraordinary circumstances, the Commission shall provide the opportunity for members of the public to view such meeting by video and to participate in proceedings by video conference in real time where public comment or participation is authorized. The Commission shall ensure that where extraordinary circumstances, video conferencing is used, it authorizes the same public participation or testimony as in-person participation or testimony. Ten, open meetings of the Commission conducted using extraordinary circumstances video conferencing pursuant to the provisions of POL one-oh-three-a shall be broadcast pursuant to the requirements of POL one-oh-three-f and shall utilize technology to permit access by members of the public with disabilities consistent with the nineteen ninety Americans with Disabilities Act as amended and corresponding guidelines. For the purposes of these guidelines, disability shall have the meaning defined in Executive Law, Section two-ninety-two. Eleven, the in-person participation requirements of POL one-oh-three-a-two-c shall not apply during a state disaster, emergency declared by the Governor pursuant to Executive Law, Section twenty-eight, if the Commission determines that the circumstances necessitating the emergency declaration would affect or impair the ability of other, I should say, of the Commission to hold an in-person meeting. Twelve, these procedures shall be conspicuously posted on the Commission's website, www.nygov backslash programs backslash New York State Commission, Community Commission Reparations Remedies.
Thank you, Commissioner Jennifer Jones Austin, you deserve some water, some apple juice, and a Pepsi. Thank you. So commissioners, do you have, the floor is open for you to make comments about the resolution.
I think it's a very well-written, um, resolution, definitely. I just want to be clear as to the second clause that we are, I'm going to reread it, for purposes of these procedures, the term extraordinary circumstances includes disability, illness, caregiver responsibility, or any other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes a member's physical attendance at such meeting. I think we get a little bit into the weeds in the second portion where it says, or any other significant or unexpected factors or events. Because we're all very busy people, I shared with everyone today that I started a job yesterday, but was able to contact my employer so that I can make myself physically available today because I had told the Chair I would not be here. So can we define what any other significant and unexpected factors may be? And this is why, we have a very small window, and I know you're going to get sick of me saying that, but I think we have to be present, right? Unless it is for those extraordinary circumstances that are defined here. So what would fall under the category of other significant or unexpected factors to commissioners? Well, that's, that's taken care of here. That's here in, um, no, it's not in the same clause.
But I think you mean if someone is, say, I'm in New York City, and a meeting is in Buffalo, and some may be able to get to Buffalo.
Right.
But because of weather, uh, you know, inclement weather that does not allow commissioners to travel from the city to Buffalo, that's what you're speaking to, isn't it?
That's exactly. Is that it? Yes. Because I thought that was covered here. But that's fine. I mean, that would be an unexpected factor, is that what you're saying?
Right, but let's just say the majority of the, uh, the majority of the Commission can make it, or vice versa. So I guess we need to break it down a little bit more so that it defines if I can't get there or such as horrific, you know, uh, anything. You're in Buffalo, so we, we know that, uh, things can happen that may not affect even from Syracuse going east. So we probably do need to break that down a little bit more so there's a little bit more clarity, uh, to that. Thank you.
I, I agree with, um, Linda Brown and Deborah. I think if we put the word weather in, that should take care of that. I think it's a problem if we keep it open-ended. I think you have to close it out.
Close what, did you say? I'm sorry.
I think that it's important to make the definition clear. I think, I think adding weather as an extended.
Be specific with the word weather.
Right, I think it's important.
Commissioners, other comments from the floor?
I, um, I suggest that in that provision, that there be some, some language about who is the, uh, the deter, who determines what is an extraordinary circumstance? Is that the Chair? Is that the, the Executive Committee? Who makes that determination? I mean, I'll just, we all are serving as volunteers on this Commission, and there will be circumstances from time to time. It's a, it's a beautiful thing that our Vice Chair was able to make the adjustment and be here, and we very much appreciate you being here. But as volunteers, there are times when people in their roles as, you know, affiliated with employers and organizations, that they may not be able to make that adjustment. And so that might be an extraordinary circumstance. It may not be a, you can't do it every month, but there may be circumstances when people cannot. Uh, and so I think we just need to allow room for that and have something in here about who makes the decision.
Because your employer was being very generous, because your employer could have said no.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Nobody's here to lose a job while they try to give reparations for others.
I wanted to concur with that, with, I won't repeat what Jennifer said, but that was, uh, what was on my mind, is who makes the decision becomes an important piece, and it seems to me that if there's an Executive Committee and/or Chair and Co-Chair, that that might be a judgment call that could be made there because there's a factor of trust in that regard.
Actually, I was going to add that, um, thank you, Commissioners. So I, I, I was actually going to add that, that it be the Executive Committee, our leadership team, so to speak.
Any other comments? What about number of times there's an extraordinary circumstance, right? Are we going to limit it to, you allow for one, we allow, we only have eleven months left to do the work? Um, what, and so, do we want to put a number on that?
So, um, I think it's been said, I think, uh, Vice Chair mentioned it, that we have a limited time to do this. We all said yes to this work, uh, this very important work, and so we all need to be able to figure out, um, one way or another, how to be here. So I am, I am very open to that type of discussion, uh, but on the, on the other hand, I understand that we're all adults, and, and so, uh, we, we do need to hold ourselves accountable, but, um, but also to the public as well. And so if we said yes to this work, um, we, we need to be able to, to show up and to be present, um, to, to move forward the work. And so, um, with only eleven months left and how many meetings, um, we're going to have scheduled, uh, I, I think that is appropriate discussion. God forbid, anything, anything happens.
I think that is also facilitated by the degree that there's consensus on the dates. I mean, it's one thing to have a series of dates presented, it's another. I mean, it's one thing to have a series of dates presented, it's another to do a doodle poll or whatever is required in order to get a consensus on the dates or establish a standard date that we all know will be the second Wednesday or whatever so we can clear our schedules for that. But if there's just a series of dates, it's very difficult to determine what may happen on those dates in, in advance. But if we know, if we have, um, if we also, if we sort of agree on what the dates are, then that should maximize our potential to be here.
I, I would, um, I appreciate the points that have been made by my fellow commissioners, and I just want to add to the consideration around the, the number of times that someone could, can, can call extraordinary circumstance. I just want to echo your point about us all being adults. We agreed, we agreed to serve. We believe in this commission and the necessity and the value. We understand and appreciate the impact that this commission will have here in New York and beyond. Having served, uh, in New York City as the chair of the Racial Justice Commission, there were times when commissioners could not attend the meetings, but I never doubted, questioned, or challenged their commitment to the work. And everybody carried and pulled their weight, uh, and we were able to see that commission through to its stated, uh, you know, aims and objectives and secure changes that we'd never realized in the nation, we have not seen in the nation, anywhere in this nation. So I don't think that we have to maybe discipline people or look at people like, you know, oh, you're out two times and you're not, you're not showing your, your commitment to this. People have lives, but they're here and they've done this, you know, they're, they're here for a reason. And so I think as a way of building community and collegiality, we don't need to begin with a, if you're not here more, if you're absent more than one time, that says something about your commitment to. I think people are going to show up. They made a decision to be a part of this.
So chair, um, I, I think I will lean to, uh, the, the last decision that we made to leave it to the executive, uh, team. So if the executive team starts to recognize a pattern or, or whatever, then, then that executive team could, um, could address that instead of what Commissioner just mentioned as far as giving a hard, fast number.
One other question would be on the timeline, the, the four days' notice. What if we have a situation where, as an example, COVID is raging right now, and there will be commissioners who may find themselves in a situation where they have COVID or they have some other illness. We're moving into the, uh, the winter where there's a greater likelihood that people will have transmittable viruses, you know, flu and the like. And so I think we need to be careful about this four days' notice. We could find a situation where this commissioner who has every intention of being here and the day before, that person is, you know, tests positive for COVID. Is that person from, uh, precluded from participating because of that? I think we just need to give that consideration about the four days' requirement. If it's something that looks like it should have been planned, so let me give you an example. If you have a, a board meeting as the head of your organization or institution, and that board meeting has been set for six months or a year's time, and now the date conflicts, yes, you should give notice more than four days ahead, but if you've got a, you're a caregiver, and my mother broke her hip this summer, was I prepared for that? I had no idea that was coming. I had to rearrange my schedule, you know, very quickly to accommodate her. So I would just ask that we consider that four-day notification. If it is real exigent, you know, circumstances, then maybe we should not have that be a hard and fast rule.
So commissioners, I heard, I'm sorry, Commissioner Holes.
I'm sorry. And so I, I do have another recommendation as far as us being able to move along in our agenda. Um, I think there are several, um, adjustments and edits that we have to this. I think if we throw it to the newly formed executive, um, committee to be able to hash that out and then, um, bring it back to the next hearing that we have to, to be able to vote on.
So the only thing, if we do that, Commissioner Holes, I just want you all to consider that we will not be able to, that means at the next meeting, we will not be able to have video conferencing as an option.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so, but to, to Dr. Daniel's point, um, and I know there was a, a suggested schedule that went out. If, if we could get consensus, um, going forward out with the, the suggested meeting dates, that hopefully we can alleviate, uh, that issue. And so we, but.
Let me ask a question, and I, just to build on your, your thoughts about this. Is it possible, I don't know if the law, uh, if the rules provide this, but if the commission members, uh, could vote on the, um, the approval of video conferencing with an understanding that the executive committee is to work out, uh, a few of the, the questions that have been raised, uh, can the, can the commission give the executive body, if it approves video conferencing overall, the authority to then just finalize a few of these particulars?
So I, I'm sort of semi-parliamentarian there.
It's, it's sort of shrugging and shaking and saying, yes. So we, we can, we can approve the, the concept, the overall concept with, with the edits to, to come through.
Commissioner, Commissioner Holes, if you would just allow me to, um, highlight some of the things that we mentioned, and then we'll make room for public comment. One, we talked about adding "weather" as one of the extraordinary circumstances. We talked about adding the executive committee to help establish and determine, um, what is an extraordinary circumstance. We also, um, talked about the four-day notice, making sure that the four-day notice is, if it's not necessary, if we can minimize that due to circumstances like sickness or COVID. Any other recommendation that I missed?
Um, I guess, I don't know if this is, falls within your scope of your question, but maybe what we should consider is, uh, Dr. Daniel's suggestion of stationary dates, so we could say fourth Monday, fifth Tuesday, second Wednesday, and, and that would solidify that. That way, someone knows on their calendar, don't schedule a physician's appointment, don't, unless it's vacation that you've already pre-scheduled months or years in advance. But I, I just want to just reiterate that maybe that should be under consideration as to us doing firm dates, the second Thursday, the second Wednesday, whatever, any arbitrary date. That way, we would know to block that off and never put anything on that calendar unless an emergency came up, and then that four-day or whatever number we choose to, to give notice.
Thank you, Commissioner. We do have a set of standing dates that everyone has an opportunity to review, not standing dates, they're dates to review and respond back to, and so we can do that afterwards. We want to make room for a public comment about the resolution, and so if you have public comments about the resolution, we'll take a comment from the floor if you can go to the mic.
Good evening. I had no.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that there will be two minutes, um, one minute, I'm sorry, for each person.
Good afternoon. I really didn't have any intentions to speak, but being that I've served on various open meeting law groups and, um, I just wanted to share that, yes, concur, that the calendar, I, I suggest that you all vote on the calendar before voting on these resolutions. I think it's, it makes it a little more, uh, convenient for you all to decide on the wording of the resolutions. And also, as far as deciding what an emergency is or others, other things may be, um, that would, uh, determine whether you're excused or not or be able to attend by video conferencing, um, I suggest going into an executive session, uh, if someone emails in and says, "I won't be able to attend," and it's not something obvious like, you know, an emergency or health, um, if it's outside of that, then I believe that the commissioners together would have the power to decide, say, "Hey, one of our fellow commissioners emailed in and said that they're not going to be able to come in person for this reason, should we excuse?" And I believe you can go into executive session to make that decision accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I want to know if there's no video conferencing. Would you have a standalone transcript for the public to see?
We would have minutes. We would, at, at this time, we would have minutes.
Because I was looking at the transcript from the, from the previous meeting, and it was incorrect in terms of the, uh, the transcript that was attached to the meeting. And I wanted to know if you're going to have standalone transcripts.
I think that's something we would have to take back and, and review.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? With that, I would like to, um, make room for nomination, um, I'm sorry, a motion to adopt the resolution with the changes that we spoke of.
And so that, that is, that's the change that we spoke of, and the executive committee will, will flush it out?
Yes.
Yep, so I, I will, I will make that motion.
I second.
It has been, thank you. It has been moved and seconded, seconded. Can I get, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. With that, I ask that we take a two-minute, um, break. We can take a two-minute break? We got to grab the mic, okay. So we have officially closed the public hearing and resolution section to allow for video conference. That section is officially closed. We will begin with adopting the public comment policy. We will now move on the adoption of our public comment policy, and it's crucial that we establish a structured and respectful process for public input. So I open the floor for any comments or questions regarding that policy to the floor, or if anyone wants to read the policy, I certainly think it's appropriate.
I, I would suggest, given that it's a public comment policy, that it actually be written into the record. And if nobody wants to read it. Secretary.
Secret. Yes. When, um.
Oh, we're, we're not, we didn't, we're not ready.
You're going to read it first?
This is, yeah, we're going to read it, thank you.
Okay. New York State Community Commission on Reparations Remedies. Public comment policy. Purpose: New York State Community Commission on Reparations Remedies is committed to fostering transparent, inclusive, and equitable engagement with the public. This policy outlines the uses and procedures for public comment during commission meetings to ensure that all voices are being heard and considered. In-person public comment. One, eligibility. The commission has, oh goodness, I'm sorry. It's very small.
I'll read it.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. If the commission has opened the meeting for the public, for public comment, a brief period will be designated for this purpose. The commission will accept as many in-person comments as possible within the time allotted for the meeting, ensuring that the meeting does not exceed its scheduled duration. The time limit: in-person comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual. The time limit will be strictly enforced to maximize participation. Sign-in procedure: individuals wishing to provide in-person comments must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Sign-up sheets will be available at the entrance to the meeting room and online through the commission's website, and we have a shortened version, and it's newyork.govreparations. Individuals will be called to speak in the order in which they signed up. Conduct: speakers must address the commission with respect and refrain from using offensive language or engaging in personal attacks. Comments should focus on issues within the commission's scope and relevant to the meeting agenda. Response to comments: the commission may, at its discretion, provide brief responses to public comments during the meeting. Extended discussions or actions related to public comments may be deferred to a later time or a future meeting agenda. Written public comment. Submission methods: written comments may be submitted through the commission's website via contact us section or by emailing reparationscommission@reparations.ny.gov. The designated reparations email address, and that's the designated email address at this time. Content: written comments may address issues relevant to the commission's work. Unlike in-person comments, there is no limit on the length of written submissions. Three, the review process: all written comments will be reviewed by the commission and included in the official record of the meeting. Commissioners may consider written comments submitted by the public via the reparations website during discussions and decision-making processes. Acknowledgement: the commission will acknowledge receipt of written comments via email or another appropriate method through individual response, tho, I'm sorry, though individual responses may not be provided. General provisions: meeting decorum: the commission reserves the right to remove individuals who disrupt the meeting or fail to adhere to this policy. Public records: all comments, both in-person and written, will be, will become part of the public record and may be accessible under public records law. Three, amendments: this policy may be amended by a majority vote of the commission members during a regularly scheduled meeting. And the effective date of this policy, if, if adopted, would be today's date. So this section is open to the commission only.
I, I would just like to have a clarification.
that this policy applies just to our commission meetings. And I raised that question because if there are to be forums, town hall meetings, and other ways of engaging the public, I'm not sure this set of rules would apply. But I just want to make sure we're only talking about these regular meetings of the commission.
So this is for public communication, in-person public comment. And so we can adapt this and change this at any meeting if we want to add to this, if we choose, so choose. But this is for meetings, and this is for how the community communicates to us via email.
For commission, the official commission meetings.
For the official commission meetings.
Well, that was a clarification I wanted, yes.
So I have a couple of comments slash questions. Let me begin by saying that with respect to paragraphs one and three, the eligibility and signup procedure paragraphs, I have concerns. The first relates to the number, the commission will accept as many in-person comments as possible within the allotted time for the meeting. A real concern for me. Several on the commission have talked about the importance of ensuring that the community's voice is part of these gatherings, these discussions, and ensuring that they are heard to the full extent possible. Appreciating it's 2:48, and we're already behind in terms of the time allotted for the meeting and going item by item, I would caution us against saying that we will take only but so many people within the allotted time period. Again, I go back to, and I only have my reference points having served on a few commissions. If you're talking about engaging the public, and you want the public to be heard, you've got to be there until the public, all in the public, are heard. And so if that looks like we have to go a half an hour longer than in allotted time, then I believe that we should. I do not believe that we should say, oh, we're only going to hear from 15 people because we've only got 45 minutes. I just, I think that's in some ways disingenuous, and none of us on this, serving on this commission, are the least bit disingenuous when it comes to this work. So I would strongly suggest that we remove the phrase that speaks to only hearing from people within the allotted time for the meeting. That's, I do agree with the three-minute allocation, but remove that time allotted within the meeting. The second point: In-person comments must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. It's been my experience that sometimes there are people in the room. I'm just going to call it the way I've seen it and it play out. You'll have people who come from the public, and they're not sure that they want to talk about something. But in that moment, they're moved, and they feel like their voice need be heard on a particular issue. And so, again, I would advocate against us not saying that if you didn't sign up before the start of the meeting, you can't be heard. Now, perhaps it is a call at some point, let's say it's within the last 30 minutes of the meeting, that you give notice that, you know, if you have not registered, and you'd like to have your voice heard, then you must do so now, but the window is closing. Something along those lines. We just have people from time to time. They're moved while in the meeting. They feel they need to say something. I think they should be heard. The third point that I'd like to make really concerns public, while this is about public comment within an official meeting, we have yet to resolve, we touched upon it in our first meeting. We're going to have to come back to it. Perhaps it's new business or old business that hasn't been addressed. But how are we, as commissioners, engaging in conversations, communications with individuals, institutions, entities outside of this meeting, outside of the official meetings? Because what will likely happen is any one of us may have a conversation, and then the person, the institution with which we've engaged will experience that as an official conversation or an official meeting. And so we have to resolve, as a body, one, and first and foremost, is that acceptable practice? Should we be meeting as individuals outside of the commission with people who may feel that they are adding their voice or perspective to the process? It was our experience, when I did the work in New York City, we didn't do that because we wanted to maintain the transparency, the openness, so people would not have an opportunity to have undue influence on commissioners without others knowing about it. So it's just, it's a point that we have to resolve. The flip side of that is that when somebody has a meeting with a commissioner, or several commissioners, they may now feel like that carries, and that they have spoken to the commission, and those voices need to be reflected in the commission's work. So we have to, maybe it's not for this, but it is a form of public comment, and it's going to be happening outside of official meetings. It has to be addressed. Same thing, as I mentioned in the last meeting. Who talks to the media on behalf of the commission? That has to be addressed. You do not want Jennifer Jones-Austen speaking to the media as the, you know, the New York State Reparations Commission, if that, if what I'm saying has not been approved. You just don't want it. You don't want me out there saying, I'm doing X, Y, and Z, and I'm being presented, like, they're titling me as commissioner, so what I'm saying sounds like the gospel, when maybe the commission has not decided upon it. So these are just things that, they relate to public, media, comment, that have to be addressed before we move forward with the body of the work.
I want to concur with that, but in that regard, it seems to me that what I want to strongly advocate for is that we, I agree with everything that Jennifer said, but I think that this should not be the only forum by which people contribute their views. And I think we, there are some valuable lessons that can be learned from the California experience. There are people, I named Dr. Cheryl Grills in particular, who was head of public engagement, who we could consult with and can share ideas. But it seems to me, I mean, if I had my druthers, we would be looking at how to hold a series of town hall meetings and public forums all across the state where there is, you know, there will be rules, but where people have a lot of time to express themselves to, and that has to be formatted. It has to be formatted in general, but we also are looking for opportunities to identify what harms have your family, or has this community, or this institution experienced, so that we can document what the harms and the injuries are. That becomes a part of the harm report that will help to build the case for the remedies. But again, I would want to see meetings, whole meetings, which are devoted to the community having two, three hours of time to come and express itself, and for us to listen and learn and comment. And again, we have some experiences, some practice. We've done a number of these across the country, and we can be helpful. We need to also talk about how we do that.
So Commissioner, I just want to add, just as a point of clarification, I think this is what you were asking for before Commissioner Daniels. This is for the business meetings for the commission. They would be public hearings where individuals, we would make time, where there would be hours, where we would hear testimony, where we would have education sessions, and we would make time for that. But this meeting here is very different from that meeting. And so, opening the floor for comments for longer periods of time, we would certainly make room for that at public hearings, where we would have the floor for, you know, four hours or so. We would make room for that. But this is for our meeting that we're having today. Just so, for that point of clarity.
So you're saying, is this in part in response to my point about allowing people to talk?
Absolutely. So I still think we should make room for that. I don't disagree. I disagree with that, but I just wanted to make sure we understood that we would have, and the audience understands, that we will have public hearings, very similar to what Dr. Daniels said, town hall meetings, education sessions, but this is not it.
And just for a point of clarity, the chair sent us a very in-depth email outlining the very things that Jennifer, you said, Chair, Commissioner Jones-Austen, and what Dr. Daniels just said. It's all in the email. She's been thinking about all this stuff. Now she has her executive team. We can help her out with all of this stuff, but it's in an email. She's laid it all out.
I've been reading.
Okay, so just to let the audience know, she's on it. She's thinking about all these things that has been said. We just have to stay up on what she's sending us.
To the point of our official, our official meetings here, I would agree with Commissioner Jones-Austen as far as if individuals show up and sign up, that we provide them the space to speak. I also agree with eliminating the requirement for individuals to sign up prior to the meeting. We know that travel arrangements just don't work out sometimes as well as you may hear a comment in that someone else is giving, and then you, it triggers something in you to want to add to it or respond. And so I think, I think we need to give space for that as well, so that individuals have that opportunity to express themselves, especially if they have traveled to a certain location to participate. So, yeah, so that is where I am with that.
So Commissioner Holes, I just want to acknowledge your statement and acknowledge that we need to, we have two things that we're asking. We're asking to remove the phrase that says that the hearing will have an allotted time for public comment. We'll remove that. And we also heard from the floor that there will be no signup requirement.
No, 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 prior to.
Prior to.
We still want individuals to sign up.
Prior to the meeting.
So if, so to Jennifer's point, we have the signup sheet that will be located at the entrance. If an individual during the meeting feels that they want to add something, they can go sign up during that, during that meeting process. And then I think you made another excellent point as far as, as we're getting close to close of business, that the chair or your designee would make that announcement to the public to say, hey, those in attendance, we are about to close the signup period. So if you want to sign up to speak, please do so now. And so that will give some order, so that we're not ending and then someone else jumping in at the last second, because we do have to end at some point. We understand that part. Thank you, Chair.
And also, I concur with Jennifer and Mr. Hogue. I think it's really important to capture the names and addresses of anybody that speaks so that we can compile lists of, you know, interested people. I think it's important to have the meetings open so that people have the opportunity, I agree with you, Jennifer, that you could be sitting here, and the discussion is going on, and there's a comment that you feel you really want to make. So, the ability to be able to fill out a card and sign up is a very accessible thing. I think it's important.
And if I may just ask, will the, aside from the official meetings, the questions that I raised about meetings outside of the official meeting, of commissioners, with individuals, institutions, organizations, how we're going to address that? There's work, we have to do something there. We have to talk about, you know, those meetings, how they are treated, how the information conveyed in those meetings is handled, if they are to happen at all. And secondly, we have to talk about public media engagement.
Commissioner, can we hold those for new business? Those two discussion items?
Absolutely.
So can, can we, may I ask that we make a motion and add for the adoption of the public comment policy with the addition, with the removal of the phrases, with the allotted time, making room for signups at any time with a 30-minute warning for expressing an opportunity for individuals to sign up?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Holes has made a motion. Will it be seconded? Commissioner Jenkins has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The next item for discussion is the schedule of commission meetings and public hearings. So it's important that we select dates that allow for maximum participation and engagement from both the commissioners and the public. And we have a schedule, a date, some proposed dates that the commission has in front of them, that they can review. I suggest, again, act as a doodle poll, and if those days don't work, we come back and we figure it out. I think that this is something that we can work on within the next 30 days. But I am proposing that the commission look at those dates and provide a response immediately so that we can provide a schedule to the community.
So Chair, I would, I would, I would say that we, I would recommend that we need to review and get back to you ASAP, and not 30 days, but within the next week or so at the most. I know, I know individuals have calendars and schedules, but once again, if we are trying to provide the transparency and the opportunity, not only for the commissioner's availability, but for the public, I think it's important for us to be able to get this out as soon as practically possible.
Would September 4th work for everyone?
Just want to confirm, so we're working with the list of dates that you've already provided. Is it, you're thinking that we'll take a look, and you'll do a doodle poll, and if we have a quorum, or, you know, more than a quorum, then we go with that date? I'm just trying to get a sense of how.
Yes, thank you. So in, the commissioners have, they have a spreadsheet. And when I'm asking for September 4th, just for the community, it's not a date, this is for a response. But the commissioners have a spreadsheet, and it acts as a doodle poll, so that we can all see the dates. And if we can't get seven, I would like to get at least seven, because we were aiming for nine today, and we got seven. So at least seven, so that we can guarantee that we have a quorum. And then on the form, it asks that you please propose additional dates. So we're looking to have our next meeting in October. There's a proposed date, I think, October 1st? October 1st, not having a meeting in September to allow for us to hire the staff for the commission. And so, as early as October 1st with that date.
What I don't remember, but correct me, maybe my memory's just failing me in this moment. Did you provide times? I just remember dates.
I did not provide times.
It might be helpful, are we, is, are we looking at 1 o'clock, 1:30, 12:30 as the standing time? Because that may factor into whether people are available.
So the reason why we selected the 1:30 to allow for individuals to travel and make room, I think if we did it any earlier, it would be significant.
So it would be 1:30 on every date that's been provided?
If the commission has any other, I would suggest 1:30.
So I, don't kill me, but once again, when we, when we talk about the opportunity for the public to participate as servants, we may have to sacrifice. And so we are, we are setting a public meeting in the middle of a workday where folks that don't have privilege to be able to get off from work and come may not be able to participate. So I would recommend that we may need to, not may, we need to look at hours and days that, that give that opportunity for folks to participate.
I'll echo, I mean, concur with you. And again, I only have reference points, so, but the community came out in droves when we did the work in New York City. Our meetings actually began at 5:00, 5:30 p.m., and they went to 7:30, 8:00 p.m. at night, so that it allowed for people to be able to come and participate.
And so that, and once again, like I said, we, yes, I would agree with meetings that are outside of the traditional work hours. And I know we have many individuals that work second and third shifts, and hopefully, and prayerfully, that if they're not able to attend one of our business meetings, if we call them that, that we will have enough of our public comment meetings across New York State for individuals to be able to participate in. And so we also need to be thoughtful on when those are held as well.
I just wanted to weigh in on what Commissioner Holes and Commissioner Austin Jones, Jones-Austen said. Austin said as well. I think it has to be after people get off work. The room we were in before, when we were all sworn in, smaller but packed, packed to capacity. And I spoke to a couple of people, and I don't know if any of the others of you did, afterwards. They have a different system up here. They track what hearings are being held. Some came over, shifted their lunch breaks. We don't want people to have to do that. We want people to be able to come after work, you know. And I just wanted to share, in social media, when I posted it, there were some people saying, why are you guys still having them in the middle of the day? Because inasmuch as they are supportive of this work that we're going to do, they just can't afford to take off. And very, like you said, I can't afford to lose a new job, right? None of us can in doing this work. So I think we do, we come to the decision on the dates based on the times being proposed. I do believe it should at least be by, at least give people to 6 o'clock to get off. We mostly work 9 to 5, right? And not everyone, I'm just saying. And they do need to be about 2 and 1/2, 3 hours long, wherever they are. And while I have the mic, just for consideration, I believe the October meeting should be downstate.
Just for a point of clarity, the commission has the dates, times aren't there, we can choose the times, but also remember that there are two types of meetings that we will have. And so I want to remind folks, for opportunity for the public to participate, that can happen in the evening. We can open the public hearings in the evening. And so that that will make more time for the public to participate, have testimony, make comments, and the business meetings, we can work at various times.
With all due respect, Chair, as we've seen on a couple of occasions, the community has thoughts about process. They have thoughts about our official actions. And so, with all due respect, I would, I suggest you that you do not differentiate between the two. The purpose of the public engagement is not just to provide comment on reparations, on history, on reparations, recommendations, and ideas. It's an opportunity for them all to engage and ask questions about the process that we're actually undertaking. So I would not distinguish between the two.
I would suggest to the commission, or I would recommend to the commission, that we have a variety of times, and we go back and we revisit this, and that the meetings aren't just in the evening, they can be morning, mid-afternoon, and we make it available for everyone, because not everyone can do evenings too, especially as kids go back to school and things like that. So certainly, I think that we should have a variety of times. So my request to the commission would be that you take the dates, we go back, September 4th, we have, everyone has provided some feedback, whether it be times, Saturdays, whatever it is, but provide some comment, because it has been in our possession. And so we just need to provide the comment. And I think we had a few commissioners that did respond, but let's do that and commit to September 4th to making that happen.
Just for clarity, this list of dates, is it just for the business meetings, or is it also for the town halls?
That is just for the business meeting. Once we hire an interim operations manager, they will work alongside the community to schedule the town halls, the public hearings, because we want to see them in different areas, like Brooklyn, and Buffalo, and Rochester. We want to see them across the community. And we would need support with that. Of course, we want to have live streaming, we want to make sure that there's the technology to support that. And we need someone with greater skill set than I do and more time to plan those meetings for the commission. So we have agreement to move forward with the scheduling? On September 4th, everyone will respond back to me?
Respond by.
Thank you. Next, we will move to the discussion of organizational structure and the guiding framework led by Commissioner Jennifer Jones-Austen.
Thank you, Chair. And in the interest of time, I will try to be as brief as possible. In, I guess, communications with Chair Hawkins, I suggested that we give some thought to a clear process for how we're going to move forward, given the short timeframe that we have to move, to actually think about and discuss the historical impact of slavery on persons of African descent here in New York, and what has happened post-slavery, as well as then talk about, make sure we have time for an examination of the proposed recommendations to the state legislature and the governor's office, as well as the drafting of a report. A lot has to be done in a period of less than one year. We're now looking at 11 months. And so what I shared with Chair Hawkins is that we think about, and these are just considerations, I'm just throwing something out for us to reflect upon. We think about a four-part process, a four-phase process. The first phase is the launch work. It's the work that we're engaged in right now. In addition to laying out the rules of engagement, you know, who shall be, you know, the governing body, we should be thinking about what are the roles that need to be filled to actually get us going, in addition to the interim operations manager, and then actually hiring for those. My thinking is that we should try to conclude that by the end of September, so that we are going like full throttle. The next phase of the work would be to examine the harms of slavery and after slavery. That would be phase two, and that we would allot a period of about three months for that work. And during that time, our meetings would focus on the research and analysis, whether it's literature reviews and summaries, convenings and meetings with subject matter experts. We can also look at a review of reparation remedies in the past, you know, here in America and elsewhere. And then, of course, as Dr. Daniels has laid out and others have spoken to, public outreach and engagement being a critical aspect of that work. The deliverable there, we could think about a first report, an interim report to the public, that details, you know, our findings and our reflections about the harms of slavery and post-slavery here in New York. And then we would move into the second, the third phase of work. So the first stage would be the launch. The second phase would be the historical examination, that would result in a report of our findings, to give people a sense of how we're thinking about these issues. The third phase would be a creation of reparations, remedies, recommendations. And that period would be about a four-month period, maybe perhaps January through April of next year, where again, we would do research and development, study of reparations, remedies, systemic, individual, and community. Again, more literature reviews and summaries. We would again engage with subject matter experts and with people in the community. We would have a targeted review of reparations, remedies, again, here in USA and beyond, and crosswalking it with what we've learned about New York in particular. Our meetings, public and otherwise, would be tailored to that. And let me just pause here and say, I think it's important to make sure that we try to have meetings be tailored to these particular issues, so that we can stay on track. People know what they're coming to talk about, they know there's a time to talk about it, and that there may be other things that are brought up in public comment, but it just keeps us focused, and keeps everybody, gives everybody a sense of where we're going, what we're trying to do. And then the fourth phase would be the drafting, finalization, and the submission of the report of the commission to the legislature and the governor's office. My thinking there is that we would allot about a two- to three-month time period for that. It is an exhaustive process, done this now with a few commissions, where, you know, in May, we would begin to synthesize our thoughts, and think about how they translate into actual recommendations. And so we would dedicate some time to that, and we would talk about them as a commission. And then in June, and the first few weeks of July, we would do the drafting of the report, and then the finalization of the report, so that it is ready to be presented in that last meeting towards the end of July. Just thoughts, but just trying to give us a process. Launch, historical examination, creation of reparations, recommendations, and then the fourth would be the drafting and finalization of the report.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones-Austen, for your insights.
Yeah, going to the mic, Chair.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Jones-Austen, for your insights and your leadership, and certainly you've given us something to think about, and want to open the floor for comments, questions, and insights.
I was just going to say, I thought those were really good, laid-out plans, and I'm all for those.
I would concur with that. I think it's a challenging, tight timeline, but given the time period that we have, it makes sense. And I think that we need something to strive for, and I think you provide that order for us to have those steps to march toward, because if we don't have any goals or timings, then we'll just float out there. So thank you for your past experience, and thank you for presenting that. Could you give me the, could you give me the months again?
So my thinking was that we work in earnest to try to get through the launch phase by the end of September. And then October through December, we're working on the historical examination piece. January through April, we focus on the recommendations. And then May through July would be the drafting and finalization of the report.
And I know that if, thank you, I know that if we, if, in a perfect world, right?
Right.
We hit that cadence. But I know that there is a senator in the room right now that we can tug on and push if we need a little bit more time to ask for some adjustments to that 12-month period. So I like it, and I'm confident that it gives us a structure to move forward. So thank you.
And perhaps it gives us that sense, if we get to December, we feel like we need more work to do, that makes the case for an extension.
Amen.
Amen.
Commissioners, you have this to review and provide feedback, and then we can, we'll bring this back to the floor.
And I guess maybe as executive, we will try to finalize?
Yes.
That's great.
So we'll make that as another item for September 4th, to provide some feedback to the executive committee, so that we can begin to finalize this. Thank you again, Commissioner Jones-Austen.
Dream work.
We appreciate it.
That dream work.
So the next, we have new business, so we'll open the floor for any new business in topics. And I know that Commissioner Jones-Austen had two items that we needed to discuss, so I will pass the floor to Commissioner Jones-Austen.
All right. So now you're going to test my memory. The first one was, they both relate to the official meetings had outside, or I should say, meetings had outside of our official meetings that are not town halls or public hearings, but rather meetings had with one or more commissioners at the request of outside parties. How are we to treat them? Are we to have them? If we are to have them, what are the rules of engagement? My primary concern being that a meeting with me should not suggest that it is a meeting with the commission. If I'm not, if I'm not, you know, charged with the task, or I'm not empowered by the commission to meet with a group, or a set of individuals, or an organization, then that should not be considered unofficial commission meeting. But people on the outside may deem it as such, and so we have to manage that. And then my second question is...
So, sorry, can we handle the, can we talk through the first one? Chair, man. So do you have, do you have a recommendation from experience on that first part? Because as we continue to say that New York is a driver, and will impact what happens across the country most likely, people are very interested in sharing and having conversations. And so as we are in our communities, and as we traverse across New York State, as people begin to recognize faces more and more, they're going to want to have some type of dialogue with us. And so I would look to, like I said, those that have experience on commissions of this type, what would you recommend?
So I have to be very careful here, because, you know, sometimes people act like people think that people from New York City know everything, and we really don't. I just only, I have very recent experience. What we did for the New York City Racial Justice Commission was first and foremost, we ensured that when we were meeting outside of official meetings, we had staff who were in attendance, and so that they could record, you know, what was being said, what was being shared, what was being communicated, if it was to be considered an official meeting of the commission, or of commission members with individuals. The other thing that we did was we made sure that they were publicly noted, that these meetings were being held, you know, with, for example, when we were trying to figure out what to do around, you know, addressing changes in the New York City Charter, we talked with other state leaders, we talked with the federal government, we talked with subject matter experts. We ensured that we actually had these meetings, they were noted as having been held, and that there were minutes of the meetings, so that they could then be shared with other commissioners, if need be. But the staff always had knowledge of them, so they were kind of like our resident body who was in place with meetings. But there was not, it was not to be, there was never an understanding that if you did not talk, if you were talking outside of that, you were just talking. You're just an individual talking, and anybody you were talking with had to understand you weren't carrying any water back, you know, you weren't driving the commission one way or the other with your conversation.
So just one more clarification. So you, so in that format, was it permissible to have conversations with individuals that you made clear is not an official commission discussion or meeting?
Yeah, if you were having them, then it was like, they just, they weren't official. You were not talking to somebody in your official commissioner capacity.
Okay. And you made that clear upfront, so if the gentleman in the beige suit and I were to have a conversation, it would just, it would just be made known that, hey, you reached out to me, you wanted to talk about it, and so me, Tim, and you, Mr. Beige Suit, are having a conversation, but this is not necessarily me in an official...
Because we understood, we can't, we're not trying to silence anybody and everybody from talking with whomever. But it was just, you can't hold yourself out.
Yeah.
Saying that you're speaking on behalf of the commission, and then have somebody think that you're talking for the commission, and so now your, what they've said to you becomes part of a record, if that's not the case.
Correct. Thank you.
I tend to, I agree with Jennifer on most things, but I think it may need to be a little bit more stringent than that in this regard. And I've tried to be very, very careful in this regard, and I've had several invitations across the board, you know, what's happening, and I said I can't speak until I have approval, or some process has been agreed to. So I think that if there is, because I think the danger is that, you know, people want to know what's going on with the commission, and a meeting is being called for that purpose, it seems to me there ought to be a process by which the executive committee and/or the chair, or and/or the chair, we present the idea, or the meeting is recorded, we know what the meeting is, and a person can be designated to go to that meeting on behalf of the commission. I mean, that's, I mean, I'm just throwing ideas out in terms of trying to figure out, because then, and then I still think the recording and all that still makes sense, because I think we have to be, I'm really, you know, I mean, it's not trying to silence people, but it also, you know, if there are all these different voices, that can be, you know, highly problematic. And I'm going to combine the two, actually, because I think the second one is very simple. I think that if we have a chair and a co-chair, that the chair is the spokesperson for the commission, the co-chair in the absence of the chair, or as designated by the chair, and the chair may designate someone to speak, but other than that, I mean, that's, to me, is a pretty simple proposition, that it should not be any and everybody. I mean, it should be the chair and the co-chairs who are the spokesperson, but the chairperson is the spokesperson, and then can designate the chair in her absence in this instance. And in some rare occasion that you think somebody else ought to be designated, you would have that authority to do so.
Let me just jump in here and say, I agree, and I'll just share that what we did the same in New York City with the Racial Justice Commission. There were occasions where, because of people's affiliations and associations with certain communities, certain bodies, we designated commissioners, not just the chair or the co-chair, to speak on behalf of the commission. So an example would be just, who's from Buffalo? You're from Buffalo, right? I thought I remembered that. Sorry, sorry. But like, if the local Buffalo news wants to talk to the commission... if the local Buffalo news wants to talk to the commissioner from Buffalo, as long as the commissioner from Buffalo is like, you know, understands, you know, what are the rules of engagement, uh, you know, as, as presented by the chair, then the commissioner from Buffalo would be able to have that conversation. But it would have to be a, a back and forth and an understanding. You're not out there making news unless you've been told to make news, that type of thing. So I agree.
Um, I think it's also important that whenever we speak to the press, that we have talking points. Um, the key here is not to just be going off on your own, having conversations and talking about stuff that, you know, we're not ready to talk about yet. I mean, this whole process is a discovery. And we don't want people, community members, to grab a hold of one idea or another and then assign that to one of the commissioners. Um, so I think, you know, when we get our communications team together, that's gonna be very helpful. But in the meantime, I think in the early stages, we should start drafting some talking points. I mean, clearly, we haven't done much yet. Um, so there's not much to talk about except the structure that we're creating. But, you know, pretty soon, you know, by December, we're gonna be talking about some things that are very impactful. And I think that we need to start planning now, um, on some talking points.
So just for the commission, um, I would like us to develop just points of clarity on how we communicate. Right now, we have some ask for the commission to attend meetings and, and so how we handle that from this point on. So I think we just need to establish that. And so I heard points about making sure that the meeting is recorded and that there are minutes provided about the meeting publicly. Any other points of clarity?
So I also think that, uh, Dr. Daniels' recommendation as far as, um, the chair being the primary spokesperson and then also, um, coming to the chair or, or the executive team for, um, authorization on, on any speaking opportunities. So if it is a local speaking opportunity, I think, I think it still should be run through the chair slash, uh, executive team.
Other comments about this?
I agree, um, with what Commissioner Hoag said. I also remember, um, after our first meeting, we had only selected our chair. And there was a reporter who languished and languished, waiting for a simple response to a question that he had, which was, did you all select a chair? And so it sat there and it sat there. So yes, I think it's very important. And then I said to the chair, there's this reporter, he probably already had put his story to bed by, by that time that I got to her because we were just getting up with our, uh, emails and access to it and everything. So it, she said, okay, go ahead and just let him know. Cause it was so simple. It was, he just wanted to know have we selected a chair. I also remember that we had guidance from the state prior to our meeting that said that individual, um, commissioners can speak as long as it's noted. And I think that's what you're saying, Jennifer. As long as it's noted, whomever we're speaking to, we're not speaking on behalf of the commission. And I think that's very important to do because we don't have a staff that can follow nine people around. We live in, you know, different parts of the state. But I think if they understand at the onset of whatever the communication is, um, that we're not speaking on behalf of the commission, I think that'll make the information continue to flow. I'm real concerned that the voices of, um, grassroots, um, journalists and, um, and that was another piece of guidance that we got. We have no authority to refuse any, um, journalist. They can be a blogger. I might not be correct about that. But they can identify themselves as press. And they don't have to pay. They don't have to get a permit for it. So if you have nine people sitting in front of them and this room is packed like it was before, I'm sure people came up to different ones of us. At that point, all we could say was what they had heard, right? But I think it's real important that we are able to say, as long as you make clear that you're not speaking on behalf of the commission and then that role is left to the chair to determine official talking points, I think that's good. Because I don't want the press or the public's voice to be quiet in it, even if they just simply have a question for clarification. I don't know if I made that real clear.
So, so thank you. And the, the, the one thing that I, that, that Dr. Daniels made me start thinking about is, um, the opportunity for many voices to start clouding the message possibly, or clouding where we are. And so, think about it. Even, even if I make that declaration that I'm just speaking on behalf of Tim Hoag's, people still take it as, as my position, whether it is position as commissioner of civil service, or whether it's the commissioner of, of the Community Commission on Reparations. And so I, I still believe that we're practicable. We need to run it through the system, whatever we establish, to make sure that, um, that we are all on the same page and we are, we are all communicating the same message so that, um, so that we don't mislead the public and we don't, we don't put our, our stuff, personal stuff, over this body and, and what we're doing. So that, that's just, that's just my thought because I know it can get, it can get a little messy.
I want to, I want to emphasize, I want to reemphasize that because if, in a meeting, the press is always gonna be here. And there're gonna be invitations and so forth. So my standard, um, answer will be, is to refer, refer to the chair. You know, if there's something has to be said, I refer to the chair. Now, we can have discussions in the executive committee or whatever, whether we agree with what the chair had to say. That's a, that's a whole nother conversation. No, no, I'm just saying, cause there may be times when we say, well, you know, and, 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 you know, as, as our sister said here, talking points are very important. You know, what, you know, in terms of, of, and the press, our communications team will help us with that because we're at a certain stage. Jennifer just laid out a certain stage in terms that we're in. And so even with our chair, she already has experiences that. But then that's important in terms of just communicating where we are, what we are and whatnot. Because there are, you know, people are looking for opportunities for controversy. They're looking for opportunities to, you know, to spark something that will go off and whatnot. And, uh, my individual view may contribute to that. And, you know, uh, I think we don't wanna necessarily do that. If we wanna do that, then that's a whole nother thing. Cause that's what we're opening ourselves up to if we all have an opportunity to do that. We should refer all of these press requests, even in a meeting like this. Uh, you know, the, the chair may even after the meeting entertain an opportunity to say hello to the press or whatever. And that's what is said. And that's the better way to, in my opinion, that's the better way to handle it.
I agree. Yes.
Yeah, and I was, I'm sorry, Chair. And I was, I was gonna, I was gonna say that we can, we can have the forethought of allowing space where, where, whatever reporters are in the room or media are in the room, they can, they can have that moment, uh, with the chair. And, and then the chair can have that conversation. So that, to your point, uh, Dr. Jinks, that no one, no media outlet misses out. And so it's, it's, we, we see it with the, with the president, the governor, sport, all that stuff where they, they come around and they, they have their questions for that, that period of time. So.
So I agree with all that has been said. Certainly would take the opportunity to, um, speak on behalf of the commission after developing some talking points that we all massage through and look through. Certainly, uh, even at running my own organization, there's a process, right? Where you only, the president, CEO only speaks and then you appoint people to, to speak. But establishing strong talking points. We will hire a public relations firm to appoint us. I've been drafting the job description for that. So that will be coming in the coming weeks. Um, so that will happen so that we will have some strong talking points and we can share that. And we'll share those things before the meeting. But thank you, everyone, for your insight and comments. So we'll all make some agreement that we will, um, reserve our comments for the chair. We'll develop some strong talking points and then lean on our public relation firms to help us tighten our message and communication to the community.
So I think there was a second half, Chair. I, I jumped in and I don't know if we exhausted-
I think we have clarity on the public and the media. Uh, what, and what is the final, um, what have we decided about the meetings with, outside of these public official meetings of commissioners with individuals, entities and other?
I, I think we need to do that, but we'll need to take a one-minute recess. I apologize, everyone.
No, that's fine.
We just have to take-
Thank you.
There was a discussion question on the floor. And so we wanna resume with that discussion question on how we will handle meetings. Is my mic on? We, how we will handle invitation from outside groups or external groups for the commission to attend. So I just want us to continue that discussion and to sta-, establish a policy or plan.
So, um, I, I put that out there. Uh, I put this question out here. And I'm, you know, again, I'm, I'm trying to live in my memory. Uh, one of the things that I do remember was before accepting any type of meetings of this nature, there had to have been notification to the public at large where the public at large was made aware that, you know, if you wanted to have an audience with commissioners, then you, you know, like you had that opportunity. And this is how you go about making your request known. But it couldn't be that people had inside connection to invite the commission and then the commission members showed up. So it had to be understood that it was more of a, here's on the website. If you'd like to talk with the commission, you know, here's, here's how you go about doing that. So nobody could ever say, well, I never had an opportunity, or I knew that, I didn't know that that was possible. So that was one way of handling it. So it's all the transparency and making sure everybody has an opportunity. But know that if you give an invitation or if you open the door, for one, you may be opening the door for 100.
So I, I think there, I think, Chair, if I may, I think there are two things on the floor. Uh, the, the official public, that, that receiving an invitation, but then also, um, just conversation inside of a block club or a community, um, organization or a community of, I won't say a community event because that's more structured.
Mm-hmm.
But I think, so I, I just want us to be able to clarify those couple things, uh, or even conversation at a family reunion.
Right.
I, I mean, because, right? And so, um, people are, people are gonna want to have access and, and, and talk. And so I, I think those, if, if I'm correct, those, those are two things that we need to really hammer out.
Right. So I would propose that if an organization or a group of individuals are requesting a meeting with one, two, three or more commissioners, that they have to make an official, uh, request through the commission's website. So that it's recorded. And then we have to give notice to the community at large that there is that opportunity to do so.
And I think our executive team could decide if it's, if, if-
Combining meetings?
Right, yeah, right.
I, and again, I, I only have perspective. What, what we sometimes did was you had 10 meet, you had 10 groups. You might've broken it up to like a meeting, like two or three meetings of three groups. And so they would all have an opportunity, but you didn't have to have 10 separate meetings.
So I think we also, and I, I don't, I don't know how we, we structure this, but we also need to understand, uh, um, the point of the meeting. So are, are, are they there to, because they have this group that wants to provide comment to us? Or are we going and they want to ask us questions about whatever, right? Because those, that's two different, that's two different type of settings.
Yep. I like that.
That sort of raises the point, um, is it, the sort of a categorization of informational meetings. For example, I had an op-, a invitation to, um, folks that I love and admire to come and speak at a rally. I didn't wanna go speak at a rally. I didn't think it was appropriate for me to go speak at a rally. I would feel better if it were a meeting and that's an informational meeting. We wanna know about the commission, what its mandate is and whatever. That's an, that's an inv-, that's an educational informational meeting. Um, so I think the, the categories do, uh, do matter. So, um, I just, I just didn't feel like, you know, that- So, um, I just, I just didn't feel like, you know, that going to a rally was something that I should do as a commissioner. If it was another hat on, I would love to do that, but.
Agree, Commissioner Daniels, and I think that as you categorize the meetings with informational meeting, educational meetings, so we should have some talking points established for what we will say at those meetings. And if they're asking for more, if we ask for those questions ahead of time, what they want us to answer, that we can prepare, be prepared with talking points that we agreed upon, so that either commissioner, any of the commissioners can answer with those talking points, and we won't go outside of those talking points. We can agree to that.
Did that?
I think that's good. I think that's a starting point. First and foremost, I think that the public notice, that you can request, that, you know, like, and, and telling people when they're asking for it, and the meeting that they have to go through the official process of making the request. But I think that's spot on, and then what, and then the particulars around your request. Very important.
So we will, um, draft that as a policy and adopt it, but we will act going forward.
So the piece that I'm, I'm still unclear on is more of the informal type.
Can you give an example, Commissioner Hoag?
Um, I'm in the barber shop. And, and, and folks wanna talk, or the, the, the subject comes up.
I think we go back to those talking points, like here are the talking points that we will share with the community, so when we're talking with our family members, or, because anybody can share information with the public, right? And so here are our talking points that we share, whether in the barber shop, informal, formally, these are the talking points that we agreed upon, whether it is for the phases, right? It's probably gonna change during the different phases, but, and we'll a, adapt those talking points as the work continues and advances.
So are we, are we, so Chair, are we saying that, um, we are, we are giving the commission members the opportunity to have those informal conversations in barber shop settings or wherever, um, as long as it's sticking to, um, our talking points and, and, and more just informational type stuff, and not opinion?
I think it's the talking points only. I think it's the, so we stick to our talking points.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make, make sure that, that.
I think it's a great point of clarification, that we establish our talking points as we work with our public relations firm. They'll help us to advance those talking points, but those are the talking points that we stick to, whether we're in the barber shop, or in a informal or formal meeting. And if it's a formal meeting, then the Chair will speak on behalf of the commission, unless we otherwise designate someone else to attend.
I think Dr. Daniels is thinking through something.
Well, no, I, you know, I'm, I'm not, I think, you, you know, you're talking barber shop settings and informal meetings, your family and whatever, I mean, it, these are, these are not sort of organizational meetings. These are not, uh, it's, I'm having difficulty articulating it, but I do see a difference. I mean, I don't really wanna constrict people to not being able to have a barber shop conversation, because in a barber shop, what you doing, bro? What's up? What's, what's all that stuff you messing around with? I mean, I, you ain't gonna do no talking point.
Right, right.
Well, we working on reparations? What's all that about? I mean, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, I think you should have some liberty there. I'm more concerned about, you know, organizations and agencies that are out there in the field, many of them advocacy, so forth and so on, and they want to extend an invitation and whatnot. And I think there, that people registering on the website and, you know, purpose of meeting, so forth and so on, I think that's a, that's an appropriate way. But I have some uneasiness about it being so tight that you feel uncomfortable, you know, in a barber shop, beauty salon, you know, a, a street corner conversation that, uh, that, uh, comes up and whatever. I mean, I think, I think we can trust each other, I think, to have great latitude in those situations, too. I mean, yeah, of course, we're gonna stick within the broad mandate about what, you know, I mean, it, some people don't even know there is a commission in, in, you know, these sites, and you can, uh, you, you'll be able to share. We might even wanna do some, organize some barber shop conversations, uh, you know, along the line. So anyway, I don't wanna.
No, Dr. Daniels, I, I'm in agreement that we need to do some organizing, there needs to be a point of educating the community on what the work is of the commission, certainly do that, but I, I want us to remember this day and age, that people record, they video, all of those things.
Well, that's the other point. That is right. The age of social media.
And that's why this is a different age, different time, and, and I think when you take on an appointment and you become a public figure, you have to think about those things, that everything can be recorded and social media is available.
Everything is recorded.
Everything is recorded, and so, thinking about that.
I'll just say, uh, just to take these two, these two thoughts, uh, that of Commissioner Hoag and Commissioner Daniels. So if my brother calls me and says, hey, I have an idea, I'm gonna say, shut it down. You can't talk to me. As has happened to me, if, uh, two chapters of the Civil Liberties Union, uh, call me up and say, uh, we wanna come and present to you some thoughts and recommendations we have, I gotta shut that down. That conversation I can't have as an individual commissioner. I can say to those institutions, right, to the commi, to the commission, and we will, like, you know, have a meeting. But I don't think that I should be, as an individual, meeting with the Civil Liberties Union. Cause they're gonna interpret that as they've now talked to the commission. My brother's just throwing an idea out.
Right.
He's like, you know, I tell you lots of things, and you don't listen, and you don't go in, so maybe this one will stick.
And I think the difference is that is not a public setting, right? But when you're in a barber shop, you're in a public setting. And I think that's the very, once you're in a public setting, but if your brother or sister or family member calls you, that's different. But once you get into a public setting, I think you're representing the commission, people don't understand, they hear you, they know your name, and you're talking about the commission, now you're in a public setting.
Right.
And I think that's very different.
I, I think, I think that's fair, and I, I appreciate you bringing social media, and everyone has one of these, these cell phones, and they hit, record quickly, and we're just talking, so I, I, I appreciate that perspective, so thank you.
I, I wanted to have another, uh, item I wanted to add quickly, briefly, once we finish, if we've concluded that. It has to, it's related to this conversation.
So have, have we, have we concluded? So are, are.
And we'll just, we should probably write that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll formalize that, but we just established that talking points within public settings, personal settings are not required.
Thank you.
Dr. Daniels, the floor is yours.
Yeah, and I, this is for a future meeting, but I also wanna say that there is a way in which we, as a commission, should also be thinking about how we actually want to engage community-based organizations in an advocacy role. Because at, at the end of the day, quite frankly, as we move down probably towards the last phase or so, there's a way in which we may want to actually engage organizations to be advocating and being, you know, being out there organizing and moving forward, because, you know, uh, so I'm just saying, that's, and that's for a future conversation, but that's another. There is a need really for not only an educational phase that's good, but also there will come a time when there's a need for, and, uh, for advocacy, when people are saying, we see what's there, we support what we are doing, and we wanna make sure our voice is heard to the appropriate people in terms of moving it forward.
Thank you, Dr. Daniels, and, and that's what we hope that people will use the public comment section on the website for, to provide us, one, invitations, so whether it be to host us for a public hearing, or also to send information on what, on what you'd like the, the commission to learn more about. We hope that community uses that as a way of back and forth conversation, so that we can read that, we can have it documented. And so certainly, I think it's an opportunity to really get the voice of the community, but I believe that we want the community, um, as far as, like we said earlier, colleges, universities, nonprofits, for-profits, to be part of this conversation and to help us to advance this work. So thank you.
And, and I would ask, um, Chair and Vice Chair, that as part of the executive body's work, we take a look at how we, um, use the budget to provide for support for community outreach and engagement.
Definitely.
Again, that's also something that, um, the Chair has thought about and shared with us.
And it's in, it's in, it's also in the, the plan that I put together, too.
Great.
I just want it on the record.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And also on the record, just thinking about the example of the California Reparations Task Force, under the great leadership of Camilla, uh, Camilla V. Moore, they had several organizations that they contracted with, to your point, um, Jennifer, to get that word out. And I have to speak about one organization in particular, they went across the state of, um, California doing that work, and they, so the vetting process also for these organizations will be a very critical and crucial one, but, um, I think that they were able to do it, um, very efficient, effectively. Chair, may I just add a, a request real quick? I already said it earlier, that the, perhaps that the next meeting in October be held downstate, but I'm thinking because we have our Senator here, the bill sponsor, he may be effective in, um, perhaps getting the Harlem State Office Building as a site. Oh, he's like, I don't think so, I don't know. But that's just something I wanted to throw out there, um, because it may help facilitate a meeting quicker before we have hired that entity to help us out. Or, and maybe not the Harlem State Building, but perhaps there are some other places that he has.
So on, on that point, I would just, um, and as I look o, o, over to the wonderful OGS team, we just have to make sure that we are able to get the same support as far as the technical and the videoing and all that stuff, so, um, so, yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Are there any other, um, discussions for new business?
So not necessarily new business, but I would like to, once again, congratulate, uh, um, our Vice Chair for being nominated and elected, and our Treasurer, um, for being elected and nominated. And I would like to, to thank our Chair for, um, for getting us to this point of, of moving forward, and so we still got plenty of, we still have plenty of work to do, but, but thank you for your leadership, um, thus far, so, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, very much. Thank you very much, Commissioner Hoag. Um, at this time, we will open the floor for a public comment. We ask that, um, each speaker limit their remarks to two minutes, and if you would please state your name and affiliation before beginning your comment. And so we'll open the floor for public comment.
If you're not affiliated, just your name.
And if you're unaffiliated, it's okay.
So, so do we have a list? Do we have a, we don't, we?
We don't have a list today.
Okay, alright, so, so probably just tell them to line up.
Um, my name is Lunida Gresham. Um, I'm gonna just represent myself as a resident, um, and I just wanted to congratulate Jennifer on the, uh, Vice Chair.
Deborah.
I think that, I mean, Deborah, I'm sorry. I think that, um, you know, we waited, waited a whole month for this, and that could've been done last month. But anyway, I, I'm, I'm glad that you did it now, and I'm also glad that, um, this meeting was held here, um, because when I asked the last time, it was supposed to be at a different location. So I'm happy about that. That's my comment.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mrs. Leona Whedon. My name is Mrs. Leona Whedon, and this is in reference to the meetings. Um, many have come, uh, uh, professed their interest in having the week, uh, weekend meetings, cause a lot of us, a lot of other people have to work. I'm retired, so, uh, yeah, more than one have expressed this, and, uh, so I'm in favor of weekend meetings, and do they have weekend meetings here?
It's possible.
Okay, so that's good to know. Um, and also, I am in agreement with, uh, Dr. Jenkins about having the meetings moved to New York City. Is, what's wrong with the Harlem State Office Building? And, uh, I have an opposition to inviting the public, you know, when you go for a job, you go for a job interview, and when you invite the, um, journalists, they can be very dangerous, that's a very dangerous group, to inviting, uh, to advocate your cause. They, you're, you're hiring a public relations firm, maybe they can interview the journalists who are going to appeal to mass media. Cause I have known, many of us known, uh, journalists, a evil journalist can be paid to oppose our, our plight. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jasmine, and.
Can you step to the mic?
Okay. My name is Jasmine, and I, I guess you would call me a member of the grassroots press. Um, let's see, sorry. Reparations, in its essence, is back, is a back pay claim for services rendered and never, ever compensated for. This is not for racism, and which should be a separate claim. New York was the most pro-slavery state in the North. New York voted against President Lincoln, with mayors who profited greatly from slavery, like William Havermyer, the owner of the Domino Sugar Factory in Brooklyn, and Fernando Wood, who actually recommended New York secede from the Union. Slave labor built major companies in existence today, like Aetna and New York Life. New York was home to the largest plantation in the thirteen colonies, which was in Brooklyn. Slave, slaves built ports, docks, cleared the land for homes, built the infrastructure for New York, like Broadway and Bowery, and even a half a century after the import, the importing of new slaves was illegal, it was still being allowed, and city officials, including police, aided kidnapping clubs that snatched black children from schools, traumatizing all children in attendance, and snatching adults from anywhere they stood, all due to the constitutional law of the federal government to return runaways. There was only one group of black people who were owed back pay, that would be the freedmen foundational black Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Uh, to the Chair, Ross, Joe Morocano, um, just three comments. Uh, one, in, uh, reference to the written public comment, um, I would maybe ask or see if you might wanna include, uh, up to how long after the meeting can you accept comments to be entered into the record? As you communicated, some people might get a thought during the meeting about adding something, and maybe having closing dates for official comments that are written, that way if someone is even watching, they might have information that could be pertinent to be entered into that official meeting. Um, second, I wanna, um, communicate that please be ultra, ultra mindful as we talk about reparations, that we include black media as the frontline speakers in whoever we wanna hire, use, and disseminate information for. We're gonna have to do like a monumental task, like in a Ark of the Covenant, you know, movement, like, you know, just supernatural time, um, that we have within these, like eleven months. Um, the third communication, uh, in reference to, uh, Jennifer Jones-Austen, is if you all decide upon utilizing that plan of action, I would really suggest, and I'm, I'm quite sure everyone at the table knows, reach out to your local teams, because black people have already been studying, they already on this thing. So the earlier you can give your community working assignments, um, miracles might happen before you could even say amen, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make an appeal for three minutes.
Can you state your name?
Annette Wilcox. I'm a member of the U.S. Freedman Project, I'm from New York City. I was following the, uh, what was said in here about time being three minutes, so I would appeal that, and I based my comments on three minutes. I've been honing it down for about three hours now. So if you don't mind, so, um, uh, again, my name is Annette Wilcox, and I'm a member of the U.S. Freedman Project. The U.S. Freedman Project is a grassroots organization that seeks to reinvigorate the, uh, the plans of the Freedman Bank and the Freedman Bureau. I am the great, proud, great, great granddaughter of Archibald Mobley, born enslaved in eighteen twenty-six, and I proudly possess a copy of his eighteen seventy-six, I'm sorry, he was born in eighteen twenty-six, and I possess a copy of his eighteen seventy-six voter registration form. The New York State Commission calls for reparations for all people of African descent. Some commissioners and sponsors of the reparations bill have floated the idea of splitting eligibility into three time slots. Those who were enslaved in New York State, those who were in New York State from eighteen sixty-five to nineteen sixty-five, and those who were impacted post-civil rights. These three-tiered eligibility criteria, based on ancestral arrival times in New York State, flagrantly sidelines the descendants of slavery in the United States, American freedmen, and fails to acknowledge their specific lineage. The commission's approach minimizes the profound general, generational injustices endured by American freedmen, whose ancestors. whose ancestors were subject to the brutal systems of American slavery in the South and fled north to escape the Jim Crow terror, pro-slavery. The commission argues that black immigrants come to U.S. as, as a result of U.S. imperialism, claiming that all black people in the U.S. are Africans who need repair as a group. Yet ignores the fact that almost 50% of black immigrants have arrived in the U.S. post-2000, many with more wealth than the average freedman. Ironically, without the labor and suffering of the enslaved individuals in the South, New York State, New York City would not exist as they do today. The wealth and prosperity of New York State and the city were built on the backs of slave people, enslaved people, in the U.S. South in the 1800s. New York City was so entwined with Southern slavery that the mayor suggested the city succeed with the South. Yet the individuals who forbear labor, built the economy of New York City in the South, will be marginalized with their lineage only based on when they quote-unquote immigrated to New York State. Reparations are meant to address specific historical wrongs to a specific group. Not all Asian-Americans were given reparations for the internment of the Japanese during World War II, though most Asians faced discrimination in the 1940s. Similarly, reparations meant for Native Americans did not indiscriminately include all indigenous people from both Americas. This bill, as it stands, it's not about reparations for a specific harm to a specific people. It's about a racial equity. And it will be challenged under the 14 amendments, equal protection clause, as other reparations plans have been. We must reject this one-size-fits-all approach and demand that reparations specifically address the generational injustices suffered by U.S. descendants of slavery. The Emancipation Proclamation and the Sabotage Freedman Bank were the last pieces of legislation signed specifically for the enslaved. There has never been a specific piece of legislation signed for their sentence since then. To call this a reparations commission for slavery and its vestiges, and yet marginalized American freedmen, will only continue the long history of injustices we have faced.
Thank you.
I will try to speak fast. I applaud the Times Union for covering the, the reparations hearing. A lot of logistical points, and then I'll make a point or two. People should ID themselves when they come before the mic. This is an official hearing. You've got to keep an official record. And if I can encourage you guys up there to speak loud. You, you're, you're, don't assume that your voice or the microphone or whatever, speak loud. I wanted to, somehow, I was thanked, but I also want to thank Assemblywoman Salages, Senator Brisport, and even Child Baron, who, who played a role here. When you hire your communications group, we need to really work on the thing of proper notification, trying to get that stuff out. We, you should also explore the different rooms that you can. Do you really need to pay this much for this type of room? And you may also explore some, some, some more food and different type of food. If you're going to do late-night meetings, you need to start working on the issue of hotels for you guys. That you, to, to get a person from Buffalo to come down to New York City and not have a hotel for them and do a late-night meeting, or vice versa, is, is wrong. Can I encourage you to look at the Governor's Office to do basic logistics till you hired someone? Anybody can come up with these dates and write down these dates and find basic stuff. You may also want to get rid of the idea of interim. If you're waiting this long and don't have the staff to do, then, and if you got staff from the Governor's Office to do some basic stuff, then you might as well just go straight out into hiring more substantial stuff. Can I encourage you guys to hire some pros? When you're going to speak of history, I'm a historian, when you're gonna speak of history, I know you're going to be challenged. You're going to be challenged in history. It's, it's, hire some pros to do that stuff, and in terms of economics too, and in terms of law. Just get some, some pros in there. Don't, don't, don't believe that you could, don't minimize your own stuff and, and believe that you could do this in, in five minutes or five days or five weeks. We've waited 400 years. Let's do it right. In terms of, and I speak now as a former president of School Board 27, which I served seven out of 10 years. I'm very familiar with open meetings laws, all kinds of stuff. You already have a, a document that says what you can do if you accept it. It's called Roberts Rules. It says that when you have, if you go to a meeting, any meetings you go to, if there are more than four of you, that is a quorum. That is an official meeting. And there are things that you can't do. The open law, open meetings law applies with anybody, anything over four people in it. And you're right. You, you do need some talking points. I would argue that we should learn from California. We saw some stuff go wrong. All kinds of folk spoke up in California and, and, you know, had their own positions. You do need, but if we go too far with this, then I'll give you the example of, of a person who is in the Institute of the Black World. Then you, how do you-
Twenty seconds.
Separate-
Twenty seconds.
How do you separate yourself from, from that? You, then everything you say, when you're in there, is, you'd either have to have a person with you every place that you go and speak. Your, being a commissioner does not mean that you lose freedom of speech, does not mean that you lose freedom of assembly, et cetera. You, you, you can't, you can't legally enforce those things. It just means that there's a discipline that you accept. Though, that's called the talking points. You've been chosen for your wisdom. Trust yourselves.
Thank you, Senator.
Good afternoon.
Yep. Yep.
Is that going?
Yep, yep.
There we go. Good afternoon. I'd like to start with a definition as defined by the federal government.
Name, please.
Oh.
Name, please.
My name is Divine Prince. I wanted a big reveal, but I guess I got it now. I'd like to start with a definition as defined by the federal government. African-American. Any person having origins in any of the black racial groups of Africa. One more time. African-American. Any person having origins in any of the black racial groups of Africa. This means black Americans are African-American. Afro-Caribians are African-American. And continental Africans are African-American. Hypothetical question. If you're able to be you, and you're able to be me, who am I? My name is Divine Prince. I'm a descendant of multi-generation New Yorkers by way of Georgia and the Carolinas, and I am the current president of the U.S. Freedman Project. Sadly, we are the only organization in New York advocating exclusively for black Americans. Those families that earned the status of freedman by winning the Civil War, Abraham Lincoln's words, and through more of Abraham Lincoln's words, the Emancipation Proclamation of 1863, and finally solidified by the 13th Amendment to the Constitution in 1865. We are also the only organization to lead a workshop on reparations at the Black Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian Caucus Weekend to educate the public and legislators on how to get reparations right. Now, I had a bunch of moral arguments on why we need to get it right. Because another reparationist by the name of Dr. King believed that the arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice. But if I've learned nothing else from the Democrats in New York and every single decision-maker involved with this bill, and we've met with them all, it's that they will not do what is moral or what is right for black Americans unless we make it politically impossible for them to ignore us. I always say this government will never do anything for the freedmen that we don't force them to do. Being naive, I always thought that applied to only the Republicans. But in this blue state, the opposition to getting reparations right has come from the Democrats and from our legacy organizations. With that said, I am imploring this commission to do what is legally and constitutionally sound if we can't do it morally. Race-based policy is unconstitutional, whether we like it or not. Policy based on status is constitutional, and it's how policy has always been constructed, i.e. veteran, immigrant, Native American. The status of freedman has legislative and constitutional precedent in crafting remedies for those families reparations has always been for, as determined by the American Freedman Inquiry Commission, whose findings resulted in the Freedman Acts of 1865 that created the Freedman's Bureau and the Freedman's Bank. With conservative activists, Ed Blum, and others challenging race-based affirmative action, the Fearless Fund, and the Evanston Reparations Initiative, the status of freedman has to be used for two reasons.
Time.
How much more do you have?
I got fif, like 10 seconds.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much, brother. The status of freedman has to be used for two reasons. One, to bypass this constitutional challenge. And two, because this current Supreme Court has deemed remedial justice, based on what was done specifically and exclusively to freedmen from enslavement to present day, as still good law. And I'll end with this. Racial justice, though a worthy cause, is not the same as and should never be conflated with reparations for American freedman families.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you all for attending today. Thank you for your public comment. Thank you commissioners for your insight.
So, so we do want to remind the group that you may submit your written rec, your written comments into the record so that we, that we have them. I know some weren't able to, to get all theirs out, but we would, we would love to have it submitted to the written record.
Thank you. And for those that want to connect with the commission, you can connect with us at NY.gov backslash reparations. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance. Thank you to Senator Sanders for being here, and to all the commissioners for your insight and your thought leadership. And we look forward to the next meeting. Please stay tuned to our website as we announce the proposed set of next meeting dates. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned at 4:19. Thank you very much.